As you wish. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us safely gather here today. Let us do city business as it shall be done and deal with this as we continue our day and our week and let's do everything through you and be a shining example, Christian, and through all of our actions in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, we're here to talk about the tax increase and the allocation of earmarkings and percentages and funding that will come with it. You know, we're stuck on the one point five percent is what we're going with. Allows us to increase and have new revenue and also stay below everyone else in the surrounding area. And that's kind of the catchall for us to maintain the business that comes from outside in and get let the quote unquote outsiders that live outside the city limits pay for a lot of the stuff that, you know, are just on our high ticket wishlist items and stuff throughout the city that we need and we just can't fund right now. And you you saw Plan A advertised for several several times and we have another ordinance, another resolution, mock resolution that Lee has has come up with if you want to talk about it. Go ahead.
The again, the the sales tax increase, in my opinion, and I don't speak for everyone else, is inevitable. If we do not raise taxes marginally, we're not going to be able to fund current programs. But the key was being able to use a sales tax increase to help fund some new recreational master plan expenses as the driver. We're not, we're not at that yet, but the benefit of the sales tax increase if properly allocated will far outweigh the cost to the uh to the people who are paying the taxes in terms of being able to fund other programs that are a direct benefit to the people who are receiving those benefits. So what I've tried to put together, and this is very, very, very draft, this is just me, this hasn't been discussed with anyone else, takes the one and a half percent increase as opposed to dealing with the entire sales tax revenue pot and allocates those that that revenue of that one and a half percent to several projects and or entities. One of, one of, one of the the concepts in my mind is that there's been no inflation adjustment to the funding that is provided to many boards, authorities, and commissions and activities in decades. So for example, if you were to look at Safe's transportation program, which Safe operates as under contract with the city of Sulicaga, the city pays them eighty thousand dollars to operate that program. That has not been inflation adjusted and it's really just based on inflation, about a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. So what I've tried to do in this draft for discussion is take things like that, plus dealing with issues that are above and beyond the needs that can be funded by Cusse Valley Medical Center, by the Board of Education, and by other departments and and allocate about sixty percent of the of the estimated proceeds of the tax increase to being able to backfill those needs, leaving the remainder to be able to fund additional new capital projects. Uh, and this is again focused only on allocating the one and a half percent. The original sales tax pieces flow wherever they flow into the general funds into existing projects and existing budgets. The issue that we have is if we don't reach a compromise to be able to uh to get the tax increase through, we will have to go into a substantial um reduction mode because we have in our twenty twenty four budget, we have expenses far in excess of revenue. Uh, so needing to be able to pay for these is also a reason for some of the allocations that I came up with. So.
One thing I've noticed off the bat, we eliminated in this resolution, the earmarking of funds towards debt service.
Oh, no, that's that's the bottom. Uh, the uh, and the remainder of the proceeds, which is anything other than this three point something million dollars shall be used to pay City of Sulicaga obligation warrant debt service. So this pays down all the debt with the remainder. It only puts, again, subject to everybody's discussion, it puts a million dollars into the general fund. It puts a chunk of money into funding salaries for police and fire and then all these other things. And there's roughly two million dollars left that goes to paying obligation warrant debt service. So it allows us to retire the debt that we have and that we will uh engage in borrowing for new products.
For simplicity, as we're already paying about eight hundred a year, this would mean two point eight a year.
It could, depending on how much is collected. And the key is, is that this is only dealing with the one and a half percent increase and the event that the one and a half percent does not cover this, there's a concept of being able to proportionally reduce everything to make sure that this total still is the one and a half percent.
And I want to make sure, and I think a lot of us can agree, one of the most important things is paying off the debt that we incur from all this stuff. We're quick and easy, or quick as we can.
And again, I haven't shown this to Win or Walter or anybody else. It's it's based on the municipal ordinances that I looked at for other cities where they're making sure that the the tax increases actually going to paying for things that are needed as opposed to going into the general fund where they could be uh spent on things that weren't necessary.
So where's the street department's uh funding at? I know we had talked about uh putting some funding in their uh budget like we did everyone else.
That that that's B.
All I see is streets, roads, bridges, and drainage system. That's not actually in their budget.
No, it's not. This is, this is capital. So imagine uh you put eight hundred thousand dollars ish a year in a fund and when you get to the fifth or sixth or seventh year, you have forty five million dollars to spend on paving, which is the cycle that we need to be involved in.
I think he's talking about just like with the fire department and the police for salaries.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Nix.
That doesn't change anything that's current. There's, there's five, and again, in this draft, there's, there's five hundred thousand allocated of funding for salaries for police and fire, which pays for what we have already passed that we don't have the funding for.
Well, I know that with pay plan for the police department, but where does this go with like his truck, the need for, that he's already got, the need for a fire truck?
That comes out of regular budget. This is, this is about, this is about back.
And that's the whole point of increasing the capital too, because those things, those things will come out of capital, equipment and cars.
And we've still got the primary funding, the primary tax funding that still continues to fund things, but this again accelerates uh police and fire salaries, which we've spent, for which we don't have money.
Regardless of the money, what worries me is putting numbers behind something we don't know is guaranteed without inverse percentages.
And again, that's, that's, that's why at the bottom, if if the total amount doesn't add up to something that is affordable, then everything is proportionally reduced.
Okay, I have a question on um the police and fire. Kelly's pay plan is around four hundred thousand dollars. If we're allocating five hundred thousand dollars, that only leaves the fire department a hundred thousand dollars.
This is, this is an additional. It doesn't mean that other funding can't.
No, I know, but for them to re, you know, vent their pay plan and stuff, that doesn't give them much room to do anything with it.
I got, I got a question. So I see what everybody is saying. Let me, let me ask this. Um, because I know a lot of us aren't in, well, a couple of us aren't in favor of this. If we do this, I want everybody to be on the same page.
Well, it should happen because we all know we need it and we're all here fighting for this money to be allocated for different reasons. But we know the money's needed.
Yeah, and we know, we know we gotta do it in order to afford anything we're gonna do moving forward. And it's probably gonna sound political, which I think all of this is anyway. What's gonna get y'all on board?
The people of District Five wanting it.
But this is gonna benefit all the people. I mean, everybody's, everybody's included from the top to the bottom, even safe, I mean, the library, the museum. So these are things that we offer to our citizens. It, we're, we're trying to improve it and we're trying to, we're trying to better the infrastructure, we're trying to bring in businesses and everything. This is gonna benefit everybody.
I mean, I just, I have to vote what my people want. That's all I can do. I mean, I can, I see the benefit of it, I do. But I also know that I have to vote how the people of District Five want me to vote, and the majority is against it.
And I hate to say this too, which I guess I don't because I'm gonna say it anyway. People don't know what, sometimes people don't know what they need until you get to telling them. That's why we, that's why we're here. And everybody thinks they know how to do our job until they actually have to do our job. Because before I came, I didn't know what I was doing. I mean, I was out here campaigning for, I was basically lying. Cause half of the stuff I said I was gonna do, I'm not even able to do. So that's why we're gonna have to come together and figure out if we as a whole feel that this is what's best for the city or we don't.
And the real problem is we can't borrow our way into prosperity. It is imperative that we find money to be able to pave roads and do all sorts of other projects in addition to the funding of police pay plan that we do not have money for. And unless we want to start going into cutback mode, we have to be able to generate revenue and this is the only way. And this is also about paying for additional recreation facilities and renovating buildings and other capital expenses that we simply don't have the money to fund. We've, we've waited too long and we've run out of time.
And then another thing too, because I asked, um, I asked Mr. Six at the um last meeting, like the money for the hospital. I know some of us aren't in favor of giving money to the hospital, but I think we talked about it um a time before, maybe if we do give them something, we can decide where that money goes. Maybe that can help you sleep at night if you know.
In their budget or whatever work you have.
Yeah, so.
And Glenn was on board with that part.
So that, but you see what I'm saying? So there's a lot of things that we can do, we can still help. Because ultimately, it is gonna be our choice. So we can help people and we decide how we help them.
And and again, I don't work for the hospital, but if the city of Sulicaga doesn't show a symbolic commitment to the hospital, and this is a small amount of money relative to the amount of money they spend and give to people in Sulicaga, it makes it very difficult for the hospital to go and get extra funding from the county, from the state, and from other agencies because it doesn't look like the city's behind it. Um, it's, it's, it's very important that we protect that hundred and fifty million dollar revenue base. At the same time, the Board of Education, although they have a very healthy revenue stream coming from the ad valorem taxes, that's primarily intended for capital projects and for spending money on things like the million dollars they gotta spend on rehabilitating the stadium astroturf. The operating expenses forced upon them by raises given to teachers by the state of Alabama that were unfunded, we have to find a way to help pay for that or education will suffer. So we're trying to solve those two problems, which benefits the people in District Five and District One and Two and Three and Four far more than the amount of money they'll be paying in taxes and the benefits that will come back to them. Healthcare, education, infrastructure, where is this seven or eight million dollars gonna come to pave their road?
Would the school, would the school be able to be, and I'm just asking, because we hadn't decided anything, so would the school be able to be, if we're gonna give the, some money to the school, would it be the same situation as to where that money could be delegated upon what we think it should go for?
Sure, it'd be operating because capitals of ad valorem.
Teacher salaries.
Right now, all of the money that we receive from the city and that allocation goes to teacher salaries.
And I, and I don't think that's a bad thing. I mean, I'm there, but you see what I'm saying? So now, if you have a choice to, to make the city a better, you know, better as a whole, you also have a choice to decide, you know, how, how this money is being spent versus just if you're gonna just hand it over. Does that make sense?
Obviously, obviously. I've gone across the state saying that I'm okay with this and I want this and I've advertised it and campaigned for it. Thing with this is, we've now taken away that three, four hundred thousand that each police and fire was going to get. And yes, there's some money coming into the capital, but that's not gonna cover an assistant chief, that's not gonna cover the new hires, additional personnel, um, you know, a million dollar fire truck.
Well, well redo it. This is just, this is just Lee's idea. That's why we're here just.
Yeah, A, we can change that, but B, some of that would come out of the million dollars that's, that's the additional proceeds that's being put in that's not specifically committed. Um, but, but these, these numbers are what I added up based on what I thought we would, we have been talking about not of covering everything, but covering the additional expenses that were reasonable and necessary and needs versus wants. We can change these numbers. These just added up to, to roughly three million dollars ish of what I think will be five million dollars ish in total taxes, including auto.
Well, look, just look at the sales tax issue right now. We're way behind compared year to date from last year. So take that as you will.
And I think too, everybody got a problem, Lee, because of the numbers and that percentage. Because even if we do percentages, it can very well be more than what we, what we think it's gonna be. You know, it, we could though. I think we're gonna go hopeless above and beyond, so.
Well, that, that's why I calibrated it at the bottom such that, that if this one point five percent, if, if these, if this spending exceeds the one point five percent, everything is proportionally reduced. The, the issue for me, subject to further discussion, is that it's difficult to give the hospital and the Board of Education or the fire department a percentage number because they gotta know how mu- what, what, how much that's gonna be that they can spend. They can't just, they can't just make it up based on looking at something and multiplying times some number. So calibrating it to an exact number with an adjustment in the event that it exceeded one point five percent of the total tax revenue, A, means that we're talking about spending this additional tax revenue for specific purposes up to a cap of one and a half percent, meaning the total increase. And it doesn't disrupt any of the current spending of the current tax revenue.
But can't you just do it by percentages and tell them you'll get whatever percentage of the sales tax increase this year and it's just gonna be different every year? Can't you just do it like that? Does that make sense?
Because if something happens in a big box Walmart, something shuts down, moves to Oak Grove, we're screwed with this.
No, because it recalibrates.
But what I'm saying is, if you use percentages, this year it can be, you know what I'm saying, good, next year it can be great. And you just, you just know what you're gonna get allocated at budget time. That's what, that's what you're gonna get. And then we'll be able to show it on paper. This is why you got what you got, because this is what we got.
This is the revenue.
Yeah, this is the revenue. So this is why you're getting this amount this year.
I wanna talk to Mr. Glenn in a minute, if y'all don't mind. Mr. Glenn, what's your number, what do you operate on a year? Fifty million, sixty million, seventy five million? There's probably twenty six, thirty million of that probably goes to salaries and uh benefits and all that good stuff. So that leaves a little bit left, but I'm assuming that little bit has to be paid where the insurance and stuff like that doesn't kick in fully for some of our patients. And if something bad goes wrong, stuff like that, right? Alright, so here's my question. Does the county help you out at all? Cause you, cause there's, everybody uses Cusse Valley Medical Center, federal, Chappersburg, Sulicaga. I'm sure there's some people from Alpine, Talladega, whatever comes and uses our facility. So the county doesn't help them at all? Well, we need to talk to them also, looks like. Uh, I won't touch on the school because all my bosses are in the same room. Then I don't, I don't think that's uh ethical for me to do. Uh, my people are struggling as it is. Y'all have known where I've stood for this since we got started.
Let me, let me, let me piggyback off what you said, um, since you were asking about the um, the hospitals budget. So if we weren't able to give you the hospital five hundred thousand dollars a year and we say we want that to go towards unpaid debt, how, how would that actually work? How would we know which debt is unpaid? Or would the person actually know? Or could we say just for Sulicaga residents? You see what I'm saying? You see where I'm going? I'm huffing that down right the hole. But I mean, would we be able to say twelve, which I know I'm just throwing stuff out, we would be able to say twelve um people with the Sulicaga resident um debt was paid because of the city's contribution to the hospital? Is that a thing? Does that make sense?
I, I get the anxiety um around you don't want the money to be used for certain things. And I totally understand and I think we support that collectively. To, to me, perhaps the easiest solution uh for you to provide support for us uh is if we designated money for capital expenditure, for example. Today, uh we'll have eighty people walk in our emergency department and sixty of those may be from Sulicaga and tomorrow, only fifty of them may be from Sulicaga. Now, the state's wigging run reports and that sort of thing, but I, I fear that we're going to get to a place where trying to manage those things just becomes too cumbersome.
So, so what you're saying is, maybe if we could help towards capital improvement up to whatever amount we're gonna allocate?
Just now.
Okay, and let me ask you this. I agree with Nate. If we're agreed to do this, are you gonna go out to the surroundings, cities and counties and ask them to contribute as well?
We have been doing that.
But they're saying, and I get it, because if we're not contributing, then, then wash it out.
We're here every time.
Yeah, okay. So, okay, that makes sense.
Cause you've been to the commission.
We've been to the commission, we have been to the state, uh, the, the activity that's underway now with the bridge fund and the trust fund originated.
That ain't gonna happen, so that money should come back. They should give us that money. Everybody, their money's back. Cause that, that bridge ain't happening.
No, but, but there, but there is a plan underway now with the commission and with the, the state elected officials. Utilize that money for things and healthcare is not a part of that. So um, so obviously what we've heard from elected officials at the, at the state level and the county level is how, how can we within good consciousness of the money if your city didn't resign and that support?
And I, I was, I like the capital idea better too, because I know.
That was your idea to start with.
Yeah, it was, it was mentioned that we would take the money given.
Everybody be on the same page.
We, it had mentioned we were taking the money given and paid towards unpaid, uncompensated.
Care.
Care. And to me, if we're giving you five hundred thousand and you got twenty million in uncompensated care, I think that would be a waste of our money. You know what I mean?
It's hard to say.
Right. So the cap, towards the capital, that you could literally purchase something every year or go towards something every year, but if you do that unpaid service, I think it's like a drop in the bucket.
And, and we're in our voting process as you guys will soon be, and I can tell you our capital requests are about six point two million dollars. We can't, we can't support that. Needless to say, we don't have the money to do that. But operating hospitals from a capital standpoint is very, very intense.
Do you still have a balloon payment to HUD to do this year?
We, we have quarterly payments to HUD there. And, and the hospital today has about forty six million dollars in debt. Obviously, the West Wing and the residents said, boy, wouldn't be there if it weren't for that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, if we conceptually agree on the, the concept, should we, should we ask the city attorney to take a day and come up with the best way of?
Well, he's gotta lay eyes on it, yeah. Let me ask one thing though. Um, since we didn't suspend the rules and we stopped there, this upcoming meeting, no, the old one. Have to vote the old one down.
The resolution is not the, the ordinance, the ordinance is.
Yeah, we have to vote the old one down.
But the reso, but the resolution would not require suspending the rules.
You just put it on the agenda as old business.
Old business and you have to vote it down.
Yeah, it's gotta be voted on, is what I'm saying. Cause we didn't vote it down last month.
Suspend the rules. Correct. Well, what we didn't need is suspend the rules, but resolution only for the ordinance.
So that's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is we have to address it at the next meeting and vote it down.
We have to address the sales tax.
And then, if possible, can we do the new one at the same time? Or we have to wait another one?
I believe we can do it at the same time, because that's a resolution.
But we still, we, we still have it to come up. We still, yeah.
No, I know. And I'm just, I'm just saying, I was looking. Glenn's gotta look at it.
We let the city attorney look at it.
I don't have any problem, I don't see any problem considering the resolution uh to allocate the funds once the ordinance is, is passed.
But, but there's nothing, there's nothing to do yet because we have, we haven't decided if we're gonna leave these dollar amounts on here or you, you were gonna do percent. So that, that has to be decided. And I have another question. So this, this money, this one million dollars at the top that's going into the general fund, so that's, that's extra money, which is not really a lot of money.
It's tw- it's twenty percent of the estimated total of the increase. So again, this just talks about the one and a half. So it's, everything else up to the existing.
So like our nineteen million dollar budget would be twenty.
Because, because I don't wanna, I don't want us to do this and then, you know, of course, we, we do wanna help everybody else, but I don't want us to get ahead of ourselves in doing this because we're putting dollar amounts on stuff and then we're not able to take care of the, yeah, inside the city. So this is gonna have to, it's gonna have to.
I think it needs to be adjusted, so.
Well, this, this automatically re, reaportions all of that if this exceeds the one and a half percent. My goal was to not mess with the current.
We're talking about if it doesn't get there though.
Yeah.
If it doesn't hit one point five.
If it doesn't hit one and a half, this may be two hundred thousand. This may be twenty two thousand.
So either way, you go up or down and readjust.
But the only, only if it exceeds, it doesn't increase.
That's what I'm saying. So you're saying a billion based on one point five percent increase, million dollars goes to fund, so what if we don't get four million or whatever, we get two million.
Everything is.
He's saying, if it doesn't meet the, the calibration of the one and a half percent.
Everything gets reduced.
Okay.
So, out of, out of all this.
Can you do it a percentage up to, do you wanna consider doing a percentage up to that amount?
Up to the forecasted amount?
So you have eight hundred thousand here. You wanna do whatever percentage up to eight hundred thousand?
I thought, I had a hard time doing that because I couldn't come up with a total from which I could draw a percentage.
Well, this also takes the planning ability out of our departments that were funding.
No, because, no, because that's still done through the, through the original tax basis and then all of this extra cash that's flowing in at the top of the bottom can be used for other projects.
So you're not gonna put any in the reserve?
You, you could do that. You could go to reserve.
It's the same, they'd be in the same situation.
So anything of anything beyond a four point one project that would go into the reserve?
Like we had at last time.
I don't like the police and fire amount. Like, I'm just gonna be honest. I, I think that we're fixing to give the police the majority of that and it not be fair to the fire department.
But some of that comes out of existing sales tax revenue. Not all of it is funded out of the.
I know, I know. I mean, I get that part, but we had to fund an additional four hundred thousand to fund Kelly's pay plan. And so out of this right here, it's only gonna leave the, the fire department a hundred thousand dollars additional. And I mean, that's not gonna help them revamp their pay plan or anything.
I think what you're saying, the whole, the whole um pay plan that we approved for the police department, if, if we don't pass this, we can't pay for it, basically.
That's the, that's the problem. We don't have the money to pay for it.
And, and in addition to that, and I know that Kelly and Rondell neither are here, I know Jason is, but I've, I've had conversations with uh with both Kelly and Rondell and on the police and fire side, nobody is in favor of combining the police and fire into one public safety pot that we, we didn't have to fight each other for. And, and in my conversation. I'm just relaying conversations that I've had.
Alex, I have a question. Am I correct that if we pass the ordinance Tuesday, the next council meeting, that we won't get any tax from that increase until August? October? Oh, it's October.
We're already in September.
Yeah.
Okay, my comment would be, and I, well, I'll mention it to Ashton when he gets back, or one of y'all can. My comment would be that we don't have to. I'll, I'll look at it, but I don't think we have to pass the resolution the same day as the ordinance.
I don't think the resol, the ordinance would pass unless the method of spending and the allocation.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's the only thing preventing it from happening. I mean, it doesn't have to be in place. Of course, everybody that's in the room here wouldn't want it in place, so they all know what they're getting. I understand that. But all I'm saying is that that's not, that doesn't kill the, the rights of vote on the ordinance and pass the tax. But it needs to be dealt with before then. I don't, but it can be dealt with without the resolution on the next council.
Well, can, can we have financial people in the attorney look at the proper framework uh and have another meeting before um, maybe during the work session? So we're able to consider the resolution to go with.
Yeah, I think, I think you would need to. Cause we have.
But we need to have official numbers people looking at it.
I got another question. So like on G, why do we have to, why do we have to put money aside for stuff like this? Why can't we just do like we always do? This money goes into the general fund and they have to request things like they've been requesting because we're not increasing their budget. So you see, some of these things I don't think we set aside money for.
Well, it's again, it's subject to a formula set by the city council, but the key is, is that all of these organizations have been level funded for so long that their spending power.
I'd be in commercial, got, commercial development, got, raises dispatch.
But what I'm saying, we can still consider, um, we can, we can still consider increasing their funding, but when you put, when you put a name beside that money, then people get a list of things to come and start asking for it. And then when we say no, they'll say, well, when you had that sales tax increase, you told me I would get it.
We'll put eighty two hundred, like you said, and put one point two in the general fund. Some, or put it somewhere else, but it's the same scenario. These entities, uh, boards and authorities have to come to us, just like they have been.
But see, cause, but if we put this money aside and tell them that it's for them and then they come to us and tell them no, then it's kinda defeating the purpose. I just don't think we should.
And they're gonna find a way to spend it, to request it.
But that's just like with some other things. If you tell people that you're putting money aside for, no matter what we think the money needs to be spit on, spent on, they're gonna come up with ways they think the money should be spent and then we're gonna end up in a.
I think we need to allocate that, of course, to fire departments and all that.
I just, I, I just think the percentages would work out so much better if you burnt it down into percentages.
I think if you just go onto the general fund.
No matter what the percentages are, a percentage would work, where you won't have to read.
But you don't know what the total is, so the percentage doesn't give you a number that people can put in the budget.
But it would still be different.
You, but you put it on the most conservative amount. That's why we did the four million was the most conservative amount based off that one point five percent increase.
This is giving people a budget. If you tell me that you're gonna put two hundred thousand dollars aside for my department, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find every way I can to spend that money every year because I know it's gonna be in there every year.
But in the case of Safe, for example, they're spending a hundred thousand. But in the case of safe, for example, they're spending a hundred thousand dollars more based on the amount that we're giving them.
But this isn't, but you're, you're, you're saying, you're saying this is a savings account, I'm saying, I got two hundred thousand dollars, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna worry that, but I can't, I can't wait to spend it.
But they've already spent it, if you look at Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec has already spent two hundred thousand.
I know, but that's why if it goes into the account that she says, then, at budget time, then we increase the budgets overall, instead of putting money aside for these, um, departments every year, and all these people are fighting to spend the money, then we gotta decide who's more important to give the money to.
What about the earth project, we have discussed that as well, allocating it so.
Earth, earth is not at the city limits, the city cannot put like.
That's, that's, that's on the bottom of my worry list right now.
But, but does it, does it make sense what I'm saying, or not?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, if you get what you said, you got two hundred thousand a year coming, I'm gonna spend two hundred thousand a year, because I'm gonna get it next year.
Exactly.
Well, in these cases, they've already spent it, this is just getting it back up to inflation.
So, so we just put this aside to which the fund that we, we pay.
They're gonna spend more, if they've already spent it, they're gonna spend more.
Well, you're telling me that I can spend more, because now, I'm not using this money to get caught up, I'm not using this money to replace the money that I've spent, to me, this looks like new money.
Well, for Parks and Rec, it's about giving them the money that they spend.
But parking wreck is different because we're talking about building something else, so money for.
This is separate from building, this is the operating expenses that these.
Well, that's why.
Not enough, but.
Are we still talking, you know, I guess the last meeting, we discussed that this would be capital?
This, this part is not, this is operating.
Operating expense?
But, but we talked about, if we do the sales tax increase for the new building, it's gonna have its own money, it has nothing to do with what he has going on now. So when we put this money, this other money that you're talking about into the pot where we balance our budget, then we can discuss increasing operating or increasing people's budget, but that money over that building, you, we can't spend that money sometimes.
That's capital out of, out of the sales tax revenue that this is creating.
But it can't be, it has to be, it can't be in capital, right, it's gonna be in its own account.
So that's what the two hundred thousand is, the, is this the?
No, the, the.
Operating for the new portion?
The, the, the remainder of the proceeds going to obligation warrant debt service implies that we could borrow more money to be able to do construction, and that this is.
But here, here's my, hold on, timeout, here's my deal, you go to the percentages, no matter what they are, we don't have this argument, because there's a percentage, and you don't know what money you're, you're getting it based off of new money that's coming in year after year, so that gives you the planning ability to say what you want, because you're not gonna plan, you're gonna plan a year out, obviously, if you wanna get something done.
But I don't think y'all are under, I don't think y'all are hearing it.
I know, but, and that's what I, I guess, you're seeing the two hundred thousand.
Parking wreck now is one thing. When we, if we all in agreement, if we're still gonna build this building, it needs its own money.
Which is funded out of the, the stuff that goes to debt service.
But it's still, it's still.
But your operations won't be in debt.
Non-operations, correct.
So you're, what you're asking is, is this two hundred thousand for the operation of the new, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, what, what is this money for, what is this two hundred?
It's for, it's for, that's spending the money, helping him spend the money that he's already spending that we haven't budgeted for.
Okay, so where, where's the, where's the new building money, where's that money?
Gotcha.
I don't see that money.
Yep.
Some additional needs to set aside.
But that's what we're talking about, right, then we, because we needed to have money for upkeep and maintenance, too, for upkeep and maintenance, that was his own money,
For operational purposes.
and nobody else could spend that money, because we don't wanna end up in a situation like we are now, we build this nice new fancy building, and we can't take care of.
We can't take care of it.
And we don't have any numbers on that yet, so.
But that needs to be on the paper, right?
Unless it's gonna come out of the other money.
So Steve, like, majority of your needs from us, financial needs, would be capital, right, you would need to spend the money on capital, right?
We're operating pretty good right now, obviously, more staff with new buildings, gonna take more operational money.
Yeah.
But, um, our biggest thing now, you know, we're still renovating parks.
The equipment, oh, sports equipment, park equipment.
We've got playgrounds, you know, that are twenty years old and everything else, and each one of those is at least a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand.
But, but capital, y'all, you understand what I'm saying?
That's what I'm saying, though, with his, like, his, like, they need, they don't need that much for operational, eh, eh, comparative to capital, that's what I'm saying.
But I thought we were planning, and I thought we were being proactive, because we know.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, it needs its, it needs its own line item system.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, but it's gonna not only be, um, the money for upkeep and maintenance, we know that this budget is going to be.
Yeah. I forgot about that.
Hey Ashton, do you hear what I was telling Nate, you know, the states want to cut food taxes, how's that gonna affect our?
Doesn't affect us at all.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
You can't increase.
That's, that's, that's state money, not city money.
I think on that new legislation, if you can't increase food.
But they're planning to, they're planning to reduce food taxes, state food taxes, but it doesn't affect the national level.
So, for parking wreck, that's, that's part of my list, um, cause I mean, I'm gonna do.
So if you do a percentage, do you can, like I said, look at it, maybe the percentage up to a certain amount for certain items?
Well, because we can say debt service, but all in all, the yearly debt service is gonna have ten different things we're paying on, so it, the new recreation center place plan, whatever, needs its own item specifically to fund through for maintenance, upkeep, and.
Yes, because that, because, but the debt service is different, because you're talking about the debt service, and that's what paying for the building, so paying for the building is different.
But when we say debt ser- that's gonna be compiled into one big, all the debt service yearly payment, so.
Then you're gonna have to have your operations, which is not.
Yeah.
Remember, too, the beauty of this is a resolution, is that we can change the resolution at any time.
I don't wanna change it, I just, I think we should put that in there, because we're gonna.
Okay, because you don't take, if you take names out and you allocate it for these type of purposes, or these, say, healthcare, or transportation, or.
Building maintenance.
That.
The, 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 the key to me is just making sure we're held accountable and don't find a way to spend it on something else.
Okay, but if you say building maintenance, um, say a truck runs into city hall, so we got building maintenance, and we're telling Steve that that's how we're gonna maintain and take care of your building, so now.
We gotta say, you could put it in your recre- you can have that.
Parking wreck, building maintenance.
That, okay, that are.
That's, I just wanna make sure we call that, because that's what we talked about.
Beyond that, if you got it allocated to Husavala Medical Center, okay, somebody about Husavala Medical Center, then your resolution isn't.
You change the resolution?
The name, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so if you put it to healthcare services.
Which then could delete the intent of the new money, in other words, there are other healthcare providers in the community.
And that's what I want, yeah, and then they'll come and say, well.
Who, by the way, can't turn patients away, they can turn patients away and show up with no insurance, and we can't. That's why we spend twenty million a year on healthcare.
So, the, the next step here is, is breaking down to figure out if we're, we're keeping the numbers alive here like it's presented, or we're doing the percentages like was presented prior. That's, that's the first thing we need to.
So should, should we write a document, a pencil to it, and figure out how she might be able to state that in a different way?
I think so, I just think some of these numbers don't need to.
We need to add another letter for that, building maintenance and stuff.
Yeah, some of these, and just me, I just don't think some of these numbers, these dollar amounts need names attached to them.
Because also, look at this now, on G, where we said the two hundred thousand for these entities, you know, are doing this tax increase, we're gonna increase the general fund, that's where their money came from to begin with. So if they need it, they come present it to us, their need, and we could then raise then ten, twenty, whatever, thousand dollars out of the general fund and not just allocate.
Exactly, I just, I think G should go away.
Yeah.
If that makes sense, I think G.
I'm not saying they don't need it, but we could get it from other places.
I think it needs to go, I think, and I think, um, H too, H too, because everybody, if we're gonna give somebody some money for their budget, they still need to come and request it along with their financials and ask for it like everybody else, and not assume that there's some money set aside for them.
Cause G and H can come out of general fund, that's gonna be increased through the tax increasing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel the same way about I, as well, I mean, if we're not gonna do the others, then we shouldn't do, uh.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
I mean, that's just fair.
And the, well, the plan, but the plan is to. What did you say about parking wreck?
So where you gonna keep? Yeah.
Well, to, from, from what I understand, I think we all agree that most of our entities or departments, the goal was, we're gonna have to increase their budget some sort of way anyway, so we, I mean, we know that, I just don't wanna allocate a certain amount, because say this year, they may need, you know what I'm saying, the fifty thousand, next year, they may not need anything, or.
But you can then take money out of the money you would normally give them, which is funded by the tax increase prior to, taxes prior to this. But yes, that could change.
And I.
That's healthy discussion.
Yeah. Because they're, they're a part of our regular.
And also, we did, we combined those percentages, because we had a percentage for infrastructure and a specific, eh, um, percentage for paving, and that's combined into that B into eight hundred thousand.
Because there could be so much overlapping in it.
And then let's not forget, too, when's the last time we gave a cola?
Yeah.
So, that's gonna take an effect, too, with a lot of people's budget, but parking wreck, right now, parking wreck is different, because we, we know what we're planning in parking wreck.
We got the.
So, their regular budget is one thing, but we have to allocate some money for this, this new deal, like, that has to have its own money, and we don't need Steve to be trying to maintain the new building with the old money, and, and y'all, we all know how it gets when budget come.
Right.
We all know how it gets, and we're trying to spread money around, and some things that some people think are important, we don't feel, or we feel somebody else is important, we tell people to wait. It's something we need to start off with the new building like that.
Cause what, it's, it's different in the sense that we legit have a master plan to go along with it, and we just, we're finalizing those costs right now, so we'll have that as a savings account, basically, and go in towards for the building and maintenance.
And I hate to say this, too.
Because we're taking out, we're taking out a bond anyway, you look at it, to build it.
Right, but we.
We're talking about the maintenance.
Staff it, yeah, and staff it, that's the thing.
Well, now, that's included in the master plan, it's gonna talk about what's gonna be needed to staff it, it's gonna be based off hours of operation and everything.
Yeah. It's all there.
Yeah.
And, and still what we built, because it's still a plan, I mean, we don't know which phase we're starting with or any of it.
But it, it still can't have anything to do with what your budget and with now.
No, we can't, we can't go back.
So we can't, we can't combine the two, and two, um, gotta figure out how you're gonna do your first responders, because Laura's right, even if we put five hundred thousand dollars aside, four hundred thousand is already allocated towards something that we've already approved, so.
But some of that can come out of current funding, not just the new tax funding management.
Okay, well, let me ask this, because we already know that the fire department is putting together a new pay plan. So, so are we, even with this tax increase, are we even gonna have enough money to do all these things at the same time?
Is this marginally cheaper than the four hundred thousand?
Yeah, he isn't, but a hundred, what is it, a hundred, a little over a hundred?
Yeah, uh, one fifty.
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty, hundred sixty-ish.
But I'm saying, if you know it's coming, what, we haven't voted on it, everybody's been talking about it, but we know it's coming, it would be idiots to, to allocate all this money knowing this is coming, and, and not even make a plan to pay for it.
That's what that, that the bottom is, warranting debt service, we have, we have to borrow more money and apply that to that.
Okay, well, let me say this.
Get more specific.
So don't, so don't say this, don't, don't do D the way you did D, just put four hundred thousand for that police pay plan, because we know we gotta pay for it anyway.
And then just handle Nate when it happens.
And, and handle Nate when it happens.
Cause you already got it.
Yep, that's what you should do, you shouldn't even call the first responder, police and fire, anything, because. Yeah, but you know you gotta pay for it anyway, because you already approved it, D needs to go away, but, or be adjusted, does that make sense?
Yeah, be more specific to the pay plan, and then address Nate's with the extra money.
And I still, the key is to make sure that all of the money that comes through the new increase does not just go into the general fund to be spent, but it is specifically allocated towards solving problems that we have no choice that we have to solve.
But you said that it could be adjusted, so once, so once it's approved, and once it's talked about, then.
They get an annual adjustment.
Yeah, and this is gonna do what you said, it's gonna do, then we adjust it.
Just like that.
But once the, once the new parking wreck facilities are approved, we can replace this resolution with another one.
I just wanna make, I just, even.
But Tiffany, to your point, too, like, we're, we're replacing D with four hundred thousand for a police department, so we come up next budget year, whatever, pass Nate's fire department plan,
Yes.
we can then amend it and have an E that says, okay, hundred fifty for Nate's, a fire department plan.
But, but still don't, you still need to take the, you still need to take the hundred thousand dollars out.
That's what I'm saying, it goes to four hundred, but then when his plan comes into effect, we can amend the resolution and put, because that way he knows it's specifically.
You're gonna add it in there.
He's getting his money for that pay.
I don't like that you're more percentage on that, just the way we had it originally.
That's kinda high, what you was gonna do, what about your, I mean.
Yo, speak up a little bit, like.
Your paving and your infrastructure, that's at the top.
Yeah, it's combined now.
Yeah, which, again, you know, over five years, creates a four and a half million, five million dollar, that seems to be the cycle we're on.
Why only three hundred thousand towards the schools, that's another thing, too.
That's what they need to be.
So is that all, I mean.
Don't say, don't say that long after Elsie.
Six, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, that's it.
Remember, she got the.
So that's to get them, get them back where they are.
When I was a freshman, I know, when I was a freshman, in oh six is when that got depleted down, they used to get a million when I was a freshman.
Yeah, they went off to school again. To get them back to where they originally were.
Right. Get them back to their life.
Just FYI.
But I'll ask her if she needs any more, because she's already got.
Don't even look over, don't even look over at her, look at this, don't look, don't look, don't look over.
We will be, we will be grateful for whatever part.
Did I make the topic?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
When I was mayor, the last budget I submitted in nineteen eighty-eight, we, we allocated nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to the school system.
Thank you.
Since two thousand and fifteen, it has kept steadily decreasing, so that's six forty-three.
See what you done, see what you done?
But they, but no, but they get them back to where they are, so, so, so who's gonna adjust this?
I think Yolanda needs to look at it and make sure that.
Your percentages were all forward.
And then, um, yeah, with some language for us to be able to then discuss.
And so we all.
Just add what you wanna add.
But we already know off top, that it's gonna have to be amended for parking arrangement, FYI.
That's the beauty of the resolution, we can amend it anytime.
Got me, y'all, nervous.
My, my, my interest is to make sure when we explain to the public what we're doing with the money, that we have very specific things that we're talking about funding, that they're gonna say, yes, my city needs that, and it doesn't look like it's just something to set aside, it's gotta be spent when we decide to spend it.
Do you want to, if you can, can you put the parking wreck, the building on there, just?
Seven.
You don't have the numbers?
Yeah.
We can base it off the plan that he presented with the numbers, that he broke them down in cost of phases.
And you can say.
It's very low, we got a five million dollar paving, uh, paving plan right now.
We're entrusting you with the numbers, so.
So if you'll work on it, and then, once you've done it, you can reach back out to Ashton, and then reach out to win and see.
Yo, as always, figure it out.
So are we, so are we?
You're doing so good at it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have it in the door.
We'll go over another draft at the workstation and try to get it all done.
All right, I gotta get back to work before I get fired. I ain't, I ain't never took lunch at nine, but I have today.
My phone is ringing off the hook.
Y'all have a good day.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
You, there gonna be another meeting?
I think, I think they're.
We'll do another work session.
Yeah.
Oh, the work session on the next council, on that council meeting.
Next council meeting, yep.
Tuesday, is that the sixteenth?
I think it's Tuesday, yeah.
We can do that, Tuesday.
Sixteenth.
But let's let Yolanda make the numbers make sense.
And, and the, um.
And we're, we're essentially talking about the same thing, it's just broken down, different, more line item.
That's my question, because I don't know.
Yolanda's gotta fix the numbers, you're gonna just gotta fix the numbers and get to you with like.
Now, Alex and Yolanda both will work on this together, right, like y'all, this'll be y'all's project.
We need to.
Make sure he's come off Alex, and G.
Yeah, John.
Mr. Perryman, could I, could I ask a quick question, I'm wondering if there's a way to accomplish what everybody's asking for, so I'm hearing dollar amounts and percentages, and I, I won't speak for Dr. Eller, but I think I'm saying what I'm about to say. If we assign a percentage, as was in your original proposal, uh, there was no guarantee that Dr. Eller could prepare and plan from a budgeting standpoint for any of those dollars, likewise for Husavala. Um, and what we see here is a dollar amount committed to all of the entities, right, that adjusts based on actual equations, up and down, right?
Uh, just that, just, just, it's capped, so it's.
Just down, so it's down, and then the balance of the upside goes to the city's benefit, very good, so I'm wondering if you could take the dollar amounts that are set. Very good, so I'm wondering if you could take the dollar amounts that are set forth here. Back into a percentage of the four point one that's assumed to be collected conservatively. Apply the percentages as has been, uh, committed to, and then we have the confidence, as do other departments in the city. That that's the amount of money that would be available to us.
Strictly change these numbers back to percentages, they're.
I think you would have it a percentage up to that five and a half.
Yeah, go ahead, man.
Okay, um, and I'm not saying that I know any perfect examples, but. But, um, I did administer the, uh, rural sales tax, uh, fund, uh, for the county for seven years. And, uh, believe me, working on the percentage basis is much, much less of a headache than. Trying to do specific amounts.
Good point. You're doing good. Thank you.
Like, like Glenn said, you can take this document and just change these numbers in this document to percentages, and then it's, it's a cap, basically.
Which is a percentage of the assumed four point one.
Right, right, and then that overage goes to this city.
Right.
Yeah.
Then we have an estimated amount to budget.
Right.
Yes, I would concur. Cap in it at that amount, right?
The four point one, that mean the. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Cause that gives them a number to go off of to.
But that's what I'm saying, you're gonna put, the, the budget, I think it's going to be specified. Whatever percentage up to that amount.
And if, and if we don't reach that amount, put in there, they can't come back and ask for the additional to make the city make.
Yeah, that's what, if it's, you get what you get, up to that amount.
Yeah.
But, but I would, I would assume that the county that you're before is pretty scientific.
So.
And you need to fix the words.
Yeah, I, I like the percentages a lot better, okay. So yeah, yo and Alex, y'all just take a look, work on that, any questions, all right, and then we'll get back. To presenting the updated version at the work session next week. Cool, alright, thank y'all.